Good evening and welcome to all our guests this evening. Thank you for coming to our final board meeting of this school year 2016-17. I'll call this meeting to order, or I should tell you that it is audio and videotaped for your benefit to watch later, over and over and over. If we can call the meeting to order with an opening prayer with one of, from one of our student trustees, please.
Good evening. So for those of you who do not know, today is actually National Aboriginal Day. So in honor of that, we will be doing a prayer based on that. So if you could join me in the sign of our faith, to name the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you. Thank you, God, our Creator, for our elders whom through strong faith, spirituality, humility, teaching, and serving ways, gave us foundation and a deeper appreciation for our cultural riches, leaving us with a spiritual legacy to help us to be who we are today. We thank you through Jesus and with Mary, amen. We have the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Chloe. Promotions adopted in camera and information received in camera. Superintendent Trustee Antamasi, would you just promote it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's our last meeting. Okay. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board endorse and support the recommendation of the Director of Education and acknowledge the appointment of Roxanna Nagoy as Superintendent Business Services and Treasurer for a period of up to five years, effective July 18, 2016, ending August 31, 2021. Congratulations, Roxanna.
Moving on to the agenda, if it asks for a approver, a mover for the agenda, Trustee Danko.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I believe that item 8.1, or I'm sorry, item 8.10 is out of order.
I don't have item 8.10.
Because precisely the same policy has been brought to board before and it has not changed. So under those circumstances, there is a period of time that needs to elapse before the same motion can be brought back per the rules of procedure and the rules of meeting procedure.
Your point of order has been brought, I believe, three or four times now and it's been ruled out of order each time, and there's not a time limit on when you can bring back in a session.
Madam Chair.
So I'm ruling it out of order.
Point of order.
I'm ruling it out of order.
Our bylaws state that when you rule that it is out of order, you need to cite which rule in the rulebook determines that it's out of order.
I am following Robert's Rules of Order and you can bring, the number of meetings in a session. Session is, depends on the type of assembly. Pardon me? Oh, what is your rule then? Yeah, we'll do it that way then.
No, it's not my rule. I mean, you ruled me out of order based on...
Right, because it can be brought back.
On a decision.
And if you go to page 83 to 92 in Robert's Rules, it'll tell you that it can be brought back. And we've done so with many of our other policies. We've brought back the term of a principal. We've brought back the attendance management support. So we will be bringing this back.
Madam Chair.
I've got to move along here and you have been ruled out of order again. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
By making this ruling, the Chair is clearly going against Robert Rules of Order that we abide by in bylaws of Halton Catholic District School Board. This sets a precedent for bad behavior. This invites chaos into the boardroom and it becomes a mockery. Which rules are the flavor of the day? I move to appeal the ruling of the Chair.
Well, that is your right.
Seconded that motion, Madam Chair.
And you want to speak to that?
Halton Catholic District School Board, Bylaw Section 1.3.
Madam Chair, I'll remind the member over there that it was actually you who asked for further debate at the policy meeting.
Point of order, Madam Chair. There could be no debate on, on a motion to appeal the Chair's ruling.
No, 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 no. I want to be clear about this. You asked for debate, it went to the policy meeting, you refused to debate it there.
Madam Chair.
It passed there and it came back here. That's an order.
Please. An appeal of the ruling cannot be debated.
And we, excuse me, we are following Robert's Rules of Order and what you're saying is not coming from this Robert's Rules of Order.
Madam Chair, point of order.
It is this.
An appeal of a Chair, a ruling of the Chair, according to Robert's Rules of Order, cannot be debated. So the motion has been put on the table, seconded, and now it calls for a vote.
All right, call the vote. All in favor?
I want to say that.
Okay.
Clarification.
What's the question?
The question is, I'm appealing the ruling of the Board that I'm saying it's not in order. So that we, we...
I said it was not in order.
The appeal of the, the rule of the Chair.
That's right.
We're asking Trustee Carabella, not you, Trustee Quinn.
We are appealing your ruling, therefore we are not agreeing with your ruling.
So this is, this is a motion in favor of the appeal?
Yes.
All in favor of the appeal? All opposed? So that's four, four it dies. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a motion to put on the floor.
Yep.
As the Chair is not following the rules of procedure, I propose a motion to declare the Chair vacant and elect a new Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board.
Moving on, you have that later on, on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Quinn?
I don't have anything on the agenda. I'm making a motion.
Well, someone else does.
As, as, as part of the procedure of this meeting, and I ask the motion be seconded.
Rules of this Board, so I'm moving on. Thank you.
So my motion, Madam Chair, was that I believe you're not following the rules and I'm asking the Board of Trustees to either follow on my motion or not. To remove, declare the Chair vacant and...
In September.
No, it's, it's a motion for it right now.
Well, I said it's on here now anyway.
It's not a notice of motion, it's for right now.
Pardon me?
It's not a notice of motion. It's a motion to declare the Chair vacant. Is that on the agenda?
It's not on, it is, well, kind of is on the agenda. Susan Tritz has something similar.
It's a, it's a privileged motion. It doesn't have to be on the agenda.
If you want to bring a notice of motion for the next board meeting in September...
No, this is, this is a, this is a motion of privilege. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, Madam Chair.
Director Dawson.
Dear Madam Chair, if the motion is not on the agenda and Trustee Quinn is making the agenda, the, the item requiring action shall only be included on the agenda with the unanimous consent of the whole Board present eligible to vote.
All in favor of Trustee, oh, first we need a seconder. Seconded by Trustee Carabella. So, all in favor. Oh, that's not unanimous. Thank you, moving on.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order.
Yes.
We're still on the approval of the agenda. I would like to move that 8.10 be referred to a canon lawyer for review.
Well, I've already talked to a parliamentarian on that and canon law being so hard to understand, for one, and it's reserved for religion, and nothing in our Education Act lets religion take precedence. The only place it takes precedence is in the Vatican. They won't be taking precedence at this table.
Madam Chair, could we, before you discuss my motion, do we have a seconder? Because you're, you must have a seconder to get it on the table.
Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella? All right. So I just told you what I have received as information from Jim Lockhart.
Well, now, we're debating that. We're debating what I propose.
Right.
Madam Chair, I believe that referring to a canon lawyer would give us some time to review the aspects of the policy and then we can begin to propose amendments. I think we just need a little bit more time to get it right and I think that you will find a lot of goodwill around this table after such a review. We'd have a couple of weeks to, to take place. 8.10.
Eight point, it's back to the 8.10. Anyone else like to speak to this? Trustee Carabella.
Well, just last week at the policy meeting, we were all questioned about our Catholic, Catholicity by a fellow trustee. Here's a chance the Catholic trustee of the Halton Catholic District School Board can vote to have a church lawyer vet the secular language of the ministry. This is in keeping with our denominational rights protected under the Constitution and the Education Act and the Human Rights Code. In Section 19 of the Human Rights Code, it says this act shall not be construed to adversely affect any right or privilege respecting separate schools enjoyed by the separate school boards and their supporters under the Constitution Act 1867 and the Education Act RSO 1990, CH19, Section 19. So many times we refer to the Catholic lens. I hear this often and it's wonderful, all through a Catholic lens. I urge my fellow trustees to vote to have a church lawyer vet the policy through a Catholic lens.
Okay. Call the vote now, please, in the essence of time. All in favor of receiving a canon lawyer's opinion? All opposed?
I have a recorded vote on that, please, Madam Chair.
Sure. So, just, okay. Trustee Quinn.
In favor, in a minute.
Trustee Row.
If all, if all the trustees could turn on their microphones, please. They don't get recorded unless you turn on your microphone when you vote.
Trustee Row.
Opposed.
Chloe.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Marai.
Opposed.
Trustee Rabenda.
Opposed.
Trustee Trits.
In favor.
Jackson.
Opposed.
And Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
All right, so that motion dies. All right. May I please have all in favor of approving the agenda? Two, three, four, five, six. All right, all opposed? Okay, so that fails. So the agenda is approved. Declaration of conflicts of interest. Seeing none. Moving on to our celebratory part of our evening, Presentations 4.1. And we'll ask for Mr. Derosi. See if there he is. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name's Pete Derosi and I'm here this evening as President of the Ontario Association of School Business Officials, but many of you may also know me as the Associate Director of Education with Simple Muskoka Catholic as well. So I have a couple of hats I do wear. I'm here on behalf of OASBO and OASBO's Board of Directors and their membership to present a plaque to the Halton Catholic District School Board in recognition and as a thank you for supporting Paul McMahon's role as our President last year. Through most of Paul's time in education, Paul's provided leadership across many disciplines. Finance, internal audit, payroll, ICT, planning, transportation, and risk management are a few. He's a past cause, causeful Chair and Paul's been a recipient of OASBO's most prestigious award, the McCordick Award, recognizing service to OASBO and the education sector. Paul, thank you for your leadership. I know this is your last night, so this will be, or your last board meeting, not your last night. I think you've got, got a couple more days' work out of them, I expect. But to the Catholic, Halton Catholic School Board, thank you as well for sharing Paul's leadership with OASBO. And I have a plaque here from OASBO that we'd like to present to the Chair, from OASBO, and it reads, presented to, from OASBO, presented to the Halton Catholic District School Board in recognition of the excellent leadership of Paul McMahon as President of the Association The Association is deeply indebted to the trustees who have supported the President in promoting the growth and development of excellence in school board business affairs in the province of Ontario. So on behalf of OASBO, we'd like to present this to you and thank you for your support.
Are we going to do this now? We have a couple of presentations to make ourselves. You can call Jackson and Chloe over, please.
Maybe just a few words as they make their way over to Mrs. Michael. On behalf of the Student Senate and the students you represented this year as your term for student trustees, and on behalf of senior staff and the Board of Trustees, we'd like to offer you a little gift for your, for your service to our school district this year. Congratulations and thank you.
Your, your wit, your intelligence, what you share with us, it's, it's going to be very missed. I hope that your predecessors can keep up the good work. Oh, yes, sorry. You all knew what I meant. Moving on to a delegation, we have a delegation this evening in regards to progressive discipline and safety in schools. And I'd like to present Ms. Joanna Furlong and Sabrina Furlong.
Good evening, Chair, Michael, Director Dawson, Trustees, Senior Staff, and Guests. My name is Joanna Furlong. I'm here tonight with my 15-year-old daughter Sabrina in order to discuss the need to update the progressive discipline and safety in schools policy. The policy is currently under two-year review, at which time it is being updated for numerous reasons. One of them to include language, which is already being used in all legislative, provincial, and federal human rights documents. The new policy is to state the following. The Board considers homophobia, gender-based violence, and harassment on the basis of sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, race, color, ethnicity, culture, citizenship, ancestry, origin, religion, creed, family status, socioeconomic status, disability, and/or any other immutable characteristic or ground protected by the Human Rights Code, as well as inappropriate sexual behaviors unacceptable and supports the use of positive practices to prevent such behavior and authorizes principles or their delegate to impose consequences in appropriate circumstances, up to and including a referral of Discipline Committee of the Board for expulsion from all schools. It has been brought to my attention that on May 17, the policy was voted down due to concerns that the language around sexuality and gender not being congruent with the Church and Catholic values. With regards to your decision on the policy, it is my belief that the school's obligation should be first and foremost to its students and not to religious ideology. While I understand that going to a Catholic school, we are committing ourselves to learning and following our faith, the school's priority should be education, safety, and mental well-being of students. We chose to raise our children in Catholic faith and taught them that God loves them and created them all equal. The LGBTQ youth did not become gay or transsexual by choice. You may feel that the policy which is already in place is sufficient, however, being in a group that has to fight daily for human rights, a group that is under constant attack and scrutiny, a policy which is specifically in place to support them and protect them is more than necessary. Being a teenager is difficult under the best circumstances. All kids need our support and understanding and they need the school to back them up and ensure their safety. You may feel you have an obligation to the Church, but your obligation is to these kids. I'm writing these, I'm writing this delegation on June 12, a day where 49 innocent people in Orlando, Florida, lost their lives due to hate. This is why you need to ensure gender and sexuality is included in your policy, because there are narrow-minded people that were raised to discriminate and hate people who think they are above others and people who feel that the answer is violence. Your decision to exclude gender and sexual orientation from the policy gives these people reassurance that they are doing the right thing. When it comes to LGBTQ youth, the Halton Catholic District School Board is failing. These kids have no support system in place. For many of them, the same discrimination exists in their homes, leaving, leaving them literally alone with no tools to cope. This is why suicide amongst LGBTQ youth is so much higher than other youth. The public schools have support groups for LGBTQ youth. My daughter spent two years trying to bring a support group into her school and finally, after the principal agreed, the kids were told that it would be better not to use the term gay or LGBTQ in the name. How are the, they supposed to reach other kids if they could not identify their group? The Halton Pride Dance, which is organized through the Positive Space Network, is promoted at all Halton public schools. The kids can buy tickets and they can get transportation from the school. My daughter was not able to buy tickets at her school. I had to take time off to buy them. But not all LGBTQ youth have this kind of support from parents. You do not understand how hard it is for gay or transgender teens to attend a dance at school, how much they stress over the possibility of interacting with kids who are not aware of their true identity. A dance for them where they can truly be themselves is an amazing opportunity that every teen should be able to experience. Please do not let hate and discrimination, along with outdated church ideology, come before the needs of these kids. These kids deserve better. They deserve our love and support and they deserve to feel safe in the world, especially
Good evening, Chair, Michael, Director Dawson, Trustees, Senior Staff, and Guests. I'm here with my mother to stress that voting against the inclusion of gender identity and sexual orientation in the progressive discipline and safety in schools policy would be a horrible mistake. I write this speech with grief in my heart as just recently a mass shooter took the lives of 49 people at a gay bar in Orlando, Florida. These were children, siblings, lovers, and now victims of a domestic terror incident named the deadliest mass shooting in American history. This tragedy is one of many. When hate towards a specific group of people goes as far as it has, do they not deserve attention? Homophobia and transphobia are one of the most relevant forms of discrimination in our society today. In my school, I am told to always treat everyone with equity. The word is a recurring focus in the school and Board. Why is equity so important? What sets it apart from equality? One day I did some research to find out and I found that equity involves trying to understand and give people what they need. Equality, in contrast, aims to ensure that everyone gets the same things. Like equity, equality aims to promote fairness and justice, but it can only work if everyone starts from the same place and needs the same things. Students struggling with sexual and gender identity need the school Board to enforce that homophobia and transphobia are intolerable. The idea of bullying and equality for all has not been enough because hate for those in the LGBT+ community is still evident in our schools. I should not have to hear students insult each other with the word gay in my classroom, but I do because no one explicitly stated that it is wrong. Language is the most powerful thing the world has to offer. When we include sexual orientation and gender identity, when we exclude sexual orientation and gender identity from a policy about safety in schools, we are saying that students are protected despite. I should not be protected despite the fact that I am gay. I should be protected especially. That is equity. In a Catholic school, no kid should feel like they need to hide a part of themselves to be considered more worthy. We live in a culture of silence and not including my identity from this policy would be promoting it. I've been told many times to take baby steps. When I asked to have a GSA, a Safe Space for People of All Identities, the first thing I was told was that it wouldn't be easy because we are a Catholic school. Then it was suggested to me that we start small, maybe with posters or one day in a month dedicated to multiple issues, so that it would be less blunt. The posters, however, would have to be approved and could not feature any homosexual relationships or promotion, and the meeting once a month would most likely be overlooked by every student due to the impossible vagueness of its goal. So we never did either. Then finally, almost a year later, I was permitted to create my group, only it was strongly suggested that we exclude any LGBT+ language from the title to avoid conflict. Baby steps are all that I've been given. They're all that I've been given because the Catholic schools are afraid to deal with backlash and argue for my sake. Surely the school should be willing to stand up for its beliefs, and perhaps it is. Perhaps it is perfectly willing to stand up for its beliefs and simply believes that this huge aspect of so many students' lives must be brushed under the rug forever. If you decide not to change this policy, you will be leaving out a large number of youths and confirming that I am right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Furlong, and thank you, Sabrina. This will be dealt with later on in our agenda. Thank you. Moving on, 6.1, we have attached the minutes of the June 7 board meeting for your approval. May I have a mover? Trustee Marai, seconded. Trustee Trits, all in favor? Thank you. Number seven, is business arising from previous meetings attached for your information? If you have any questions, I'm sure someone will be able to answer them. Seeing none. Moving on to the action items. 8.1 is the Board response to the delegation, which will be dealt with in the action items. So stay tuned. Trustee Quinn?
Will the delegates still be here when we're looking for clarification from their, from their presentations?
Are you going to remain for the action items, Mrs. Furlong? Yes? Yes, there. Thank you. So moving on, 8.2, to our first action item for the FNMI. May I have a mover? A mover and a seconder to get on the floor and then Diane will be speaking to that?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You are supposed to do something at 8.1.
Right, I did say...
According to our policies.
Right. The Board may make a decision on the presentation at the same meeting.
Well, I think that, that needs to be put to a vote.
Okay.
I mean, you have to follow the policy.
Or, okay, or we can refer the matter to a future meeting, or we can request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting. And once the decision is made, the Secretary of the Board will communicate the Board's decision in writing. Or four, we can receive it as information. Because it is on the action items and because the presenters, delegators are going to be here, I think it should be decided at this meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes. And a seconder for that? Trustee Row, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. All right, now, 8.2, we need a mover and seconder to get this on the floor. Trustee Marai, Trustee Row. Now, Trustee Rabenda will speak to this issue and then we will all get a turn to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to first of all thank Student Trustee Chloe for recognizing the National Aboriginal Day and making her prayer that focus. This is an opportunity where we celebrate the unique heritage, diverse cultures, and outstanding contributions of First Nations, Inuit, and the Métis people. And so my notice of motion for tonight reads as follows. Whereas the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association approved the First Nation, Métis, and Inuit Education Charter and has encouraged every Catholic school board to adopt the said charter of commitment, and whereas the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association approved the First Nation, Métis, and Inuit Education Charter and has encouraged every Catholic school board to adopt the said charter of commitment, whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board recognizes the history of our area with due respect and honor to its first peoples by acknowledging the land and territory, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board instruct the Director of Education to prepare a comprehensive plan outlining the Halton Catholic District School Board's response to this call to justice through education.
Trustee Carabella, would you like to speak? You have three minutes.
Okay, well, I was going to ask about the referring documents and that in one of the packages I received, there was also the doctrine of... and that in one of the packages I received, there is also the Doctrine of Discovery and Terra Nullus, a Catholic response, and then the Catholic Response to Call to Action Forty-eight of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. So these are recent, March nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. So I would like to see them referenced or included somehow that they become also a guiding force for our school board. And I have another, I don't know if to do that as an amendment? Or if we're just discussing now and we do amendments after, and then I did have one more point. So I appreciate that it's a comprehensive plan. So what I would suggest, that we receive information about it at intervals, so that it's not sort of at the end, you know, eighty pages of a comprehensive plan, but we've had time to go through it as it's progressing to see it. So I was thinking of an amendment to that that could be, at the end here, to this justice through education and notify the board with an information item on the progress at periodic intervals.
So you're making two amendments?
If possible, yes.
Do you want, you have to deal with those now in the three minutes?
Or other people discussing them.
All right, so we have a mover. Do you want to say the first one for clarification?
To add, I don't know where. It goes inside the box. But to add as a guiding document, the referencing the Doctrine of Discovery and Terra Nullus, a Catholic response, and the Catholic Response to Call to Action Forty-eight of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission.
Do we have a seconder for that amendment? Second. Trustee Quinn. Trustee Rowe.
Madam Chair, I believe that all the documents would be referred in the comprehensive plan, so I don't see why we would include some documents and not other documents. So I think with that, all of that, I'm sure, would be included, and then we would have the reference of all the documents.
Trustee Rabenda.
I agree with Trustee Rowe. We have asked, or I'm asking that the board instruct the Director of Education to come back with a comprehensive plan for addressing this particular issue, and within that plan, there would be timelines and reporting instances and all other materials that would be used. So certainly, you could come back with a framework that would include materials such as Trustee Carabella has said and other materials that would be of interest and are important to the document.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. On this amendment through you, Madam Chair, I think that by specifying those specific documents, that way they will be included in the report. The first presentation that came to us didn't include those, and that's why it may not have been brought for discussion. So if we do include specific references to the teaching or the response from the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops and other documents that were presented at our visit to Georgetown or Milton, wherever we had our meeting, Crawford Lake, that if we specify that those be included in the response. And secondarily, I thought maybe a committee could be struck to participate in that. That Trustee Rabenda is calling for a comprehensive, sorry, find it.
Can I ask a question for clarification? I'm sorry, can I ask a question for clarification purposes? Did you not say that those documents were included? Okay, I just wanted to know. Did you say that, Mark? That you thought they were in here?
They would be included in a plan that was put together.
In a plan, yes, okay, sorry. Trustee Mar-
Madam Chair, I have confidence that staff will put together a comprehensive plan and bring it back to the board for approval.
Point of view, Madam Chair, I ask that the board strike a committee to join the director in putting together this plan.
Trustee Carabella's amendment. So we can get back to that one. Trustee Intomasi.
I was just going to thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to add also that, I mean, staff has been working on all their educational tools for some time now, so I'm sure they have all those documents and they've been using those as guidelines all along. And so I'm sure, once we have a different, another framework, it will be done. So I'm okay with the motion as it is.
Trustee Trits.
Just to be clear, could we perhaps ask staff, who's ever in charge, you know who? Are these documents included?
You, Madam Chair, I was the one that distributed it to trustees, so it will be included.
Trustee Carabella.
Well, just for that reason, then, I don't see why is it a problem to just include it as well.
Well, pardon me?
It's current. It's not a question of trust, because it's just, you know, we've put down these ones here, so it's again putting down an extra, two documents that have been given to me as part of the package that again go through the Catholic lens. I'm surprised that there's-
Well, let's do what the will of the board wants, so let's call a vote on the amendment. All in favor? All opposed? So, pardon me?
Doing recorded votes for each thing, or?
Okay, Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Jackson.
Opposed.
Trustee Trits.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
Opposed.
Trustee Marai.
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Chloe.
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe.
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
So, motion fails? Motion fails, all right. Did you have another amendment?
About the intervals, so we could include and notify the board with the information item on the progress at periodic intervals.
Do you have a seconder? Trustee Quinn. Anybody like to speak to that? Just call a vote? Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Jackson.
Opposed.
Trustee Trits.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
Opposed.
Trustee Marai.
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Chloe.
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe.
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Hmm, fails. Okay, so, Trustee Quinn had an amendment.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair.
To strike a committee?
Yes, I'll add language to the final line. Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board strike a committee to work with the Director of Education to prepare a comprehensive plan outlining the Halton Catholic District School Board's response to this call to justice through education.
Seconder for that? Trustee Carabella. Would someone like to speak to that? Trustee Intomasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I would just like to know from the director exactly where we are in terms, I don't want to have duplication. If we already have a committee of sorts that is doing this sort of thing within the board, would it be a matter of a trustee or two joining that committee, or do we need a whole new committee? I'm just, I just don't want to see like duplication for no reason when staff's already been doing a lot of work up to this point.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to include extra people that will strike a committee. We do have some staff that are working on initiatives with regard to this, but happy to work as a committee.
Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair, if we do have a committee struck, then it has a formal duty to respond, to make a recommendation to the board from a committee of the board. So I think that might be a good process rather than having, and might answer Trustee Carabella's first action that there be updates going through the process. The committee members could inform trustees of what the process was as the comprehensive report is being prepared.
Any other comments, or I'll call the vote? Okay. Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Chloe. Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Trits.
In favor.
Jackson.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Okay, so now if we can please move on to call the vote on the original, no, on the amended motion. So it's all the same except the last line where it'll be, strike the committee to work with the Director of Education. Correct? All right. Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Chloe.
In favor.
Trustee, sorry, Danko.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Trits.
In favor.
Jackson.
In favor.
And Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Fini. Moving on to eight point three, if I could have a mover and a seconder to get this on the floor, please. Trustee Trits, seconded by Trustee Quinn. Trustee Trits, you can speak to this, please. Yep?
I have brought this motion before the Halton Catholic District School Board because Jane Michael, as Chair of this board, has failed in her duty to always state and uphold the will of the board, regardless of personal opinion in all appropriate venues. By way of explanation, the will of the board is the expression used to give life to, to vivify, to personify the end result of the votes that we now entrustees cast. The will of the board must always be expressed, respected, and defended. This duty to publicly state the will of the board to express, to uphold, and to defend is given to the Chair of the Board. The will of this board was definitively expressed at the May seventeenth regular board meeting, defeated by a vote of four to three, the motion to approve amendments to policy II thirty-nine, progressive discipline policy. Jane Michael, in her capacity as Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board, gave print interviews to Extra Magazine and the Toronto Star and a non-air interview with CHCH from May twentieth, May twenty-sixth. Chair Michael is out in the public domain as saying, in reference to the defeated amendment, it has to pass eventually. She, Jane Michael, and other supporters have said it will have to be approved eventually as written. Further quotes from our Chair. However, this latest vote isn't representative of the progress the board has made over the past five years. And because the board is already so far behind in making the required changes that were ready back in February, Ontario's Ministry of Education was waiting for an affirmative answer last Wednesday morning after the board meeting, Michael said. It was a shock to all of us. Even the board's Chair, Jane Michael, called it a shock. Further stated by Jane Michael, Chair of the Board, what needs to be made clear is that none of these changes is groundbreaking. The only thing that is groundbreaking is the incredible foot dragging that is taking place. And so let me speak to what the Chair did say. The Chair of this board publicly named two trustees and how they voted. Said Michael adding, "Trustee X and Trits voted in favor of it at the committee meeting." Let me be clear, and I do want to be clear. I do not take issue with the public knowing my voting record. In fact, we have recorded votes for that very reason. What I take issue with is the Chair of this board helpfully making a reporter's narrative by way of naming trustees. It is not for the Chair of this board to contribute to the narrative or direction of any story, opinion piece, editorial for any reporter. Jane Michael, using her position as Chair of this board, has seriously cast doubt upon the autonomy of this board. Merriam-Webster's definition of autonomy is having the right or the power to govern. It has to pass eventually. It will have to be passed eventually as written. Ontario's Ministry of Education was waiting for an affirmative answer. Maintaining the autonomy of this board is paramount. Any issue that is brought before this board must always be viewed from our beautiful Catholic faith and with that Catholic perspective. This Catholic lens, as we refer to it, is always operational. But it can be problematic and unacceptable for those who do not understand the Catholic faith, nor for those who do not agree with the Catholic faith, or even for those who would like the Catholic faith and its tendency to be all things to all people. This promotion and practice of this Catholic lens is the true elephant in this room. The will of the board is never expressed until the last vote is cast. The will of the board was definitively expressed at the publicly held regular board meeting of May seventeenth. The Chair of this board failed in her duty to always state and uphold the will of the board, regardless of personal opinion in all appropriate venues.
Response to the five minutes, everyone gets three minutes to respond. Would anyone, would you like to start, Helena?
I also prepared that in the Toronto Star dated May twenty-sixth, I quote, "What needs to be made clear is that none of these changes are groundbreaking. The only thing that is groundbreaking is the incredible foot dragging that is taking place to bring them into effect," board chair, by Jane Michael said on Wednesday. "I was dismayed by the statements of the Chair. The Chair did not correctly in any way reflect the will of the board in a positive or at least neutral manner, which is the responsibility and duty of the Chair. In fact, foot dragging is very disparaging." I even received an email from a concerned Halton Catholic District School Board ratepayer on May, after that statement. Thanks, I quote, "Thanks to the misleading media reporting, people are now finding a new opportunity to denounce public funding of Catholic schools as seen on Twitter and comments to the news story, like we needed more fodder for that, and our Chair is fueling the fire? Does the Chair answer to anyone, or do they have free rein to do whatever they want?" There was no attempt from the Chair to make an explanation to us or issue a statement, at least to us, the trustees, that she was either misquoted or regrets her statements. There was no attempt to publicly retract or apologize for not upholding the will of the board. I can only guess that after my correspondence to communications, in which I questioned whether she had breached the code of conduct of Chair, did the Chair seem to tone down her statements and reassure at least two Halton ratepayers that they are in fact fully protected under the existing policy. And this, I quote, it was received to all the trustees, May thirtieth. "The board's current policy was last amended in January two thousand and fifteen, and in its current form, it addresses our full support for a safe, caring school environment that respects and supports all members of the school community. And also, we have a very good policy in place that supports our students and ensures safe and inclusive learning environments." Unfortunately, because these new sentiments did not make it into the media, as far as I can tell, only two parents received a reply properly supporting board policies, assuring them to be adequate, while the hundreds of thousands of people who read the media got statements fanning the flame that the board made a wrong decision, which is not her place to judge and express in the media. I'm asking my fellow trustees to support this motion because our Chair clearly did not follow board policies in her role as media spokesperson in her media statements.
Jackson, would you like to say anything?
Do I have to talk right now because I just kind of want to gather my thoughts? Is that okay?
Trustee Rabenda.
I do have a few comments to make, but I would like to make those, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. I'd like to make those after you have spoken, Madam Chair.
Trustee Marai.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to start off by commending you for all that you do for the board, the events you attend daily, the staff, the meetings you have with staff daily, the hundreds of calls and emails you answer every week, and the fact that you're an example of selfless service to this board and to Catholic education. You put more time into this role than most trustees here, and I mean that combined. Most importantly, you put the well-being of Catholic education ahead of personal ideology. And I really appreciate the opportunity to, that Trustee Trits has given me here, to actually put the record straight on this because it was a direct result of Trustee Trits and Trustee Carabella. Trustee Trits actually supported this motion at the policy on May tenth. You actually attempted to second it. Trustee Trits then went to the board meeting and defeated it two weeks later. And at this meeting, the reason for the defeat was she wanted it to go back to policy for more discussion. Actually, multiple people around this room asked for the same thing. The problem is, when it got to policy just last week, all they did was say it was out of order and we should not discuss it any further. That I want in the public record. So let's paraphrase. You supported it before you opposed it. and that was before, uh, you decided that it needed more discussion, and then, but that was before you decided that discussion you wanted was out of order. So I think we can all forgive Chair Michael on being confused on where you stand from one day to the next.
I'm going to pass the gavel to Vice Chair and speak to it. Thank you. Oh, do you want this part too? As trustees, we are entrusted by our constituents to guard the reputation of the Halton Catholic District School Board and ensure that we're responding to every issue in the best interests of all of our students. Recently, I felt it was essential to respond to the media because of the inflammatory motions, reversals, and challenges that have not been in keeping with honorable conduct. The open mockery of our bishops, the Institute for Catholic Education, I can go on, as suspect, inadequate, false, and questionable, has been both embarrassing and highly inappropriate. Renowned Catholic scholar, advocate, and former Catholic School Board trustee himself, Dr. Mark McGowan, has continued to warn us that the threat to Catholic education will come from within. His fears are very real. Hence, the bigotry against Catholic education and the call for one public education system. Do not believe for a second that it can't happen in Ontario. Quebec, the very province that initiated Catholic education, voted it out. I felt it imperative to respond because we need to demonstrate that we are progressing, as both Pope Francis and the province are leading us to do. Instead of celebrating, we watch our own staff being demeaned, disrespected, and ridiculed with nonsensical interpretations of Ontario legislation, the Catholic catechism, constant interference into operations. There's a visible lack of trust and faith in our staff. Evidence during the Board meetings where grandstanding for public record reaches its greatest heights. It would seem through comments made around this table that no one is Catholic enough, and every decision is subject to some disingenuous and distorted interpretation of Robert's Rules, Board bylaws, the Catholic catechism, or denominational rites. The most recent example being hiding behind parliamentary procedure to stifle authentic debate. Instead of being open and transparent about concerns, conversation has focused on points of order. Pope Francis is often quoted, but I don't think there's any evidence of any understanding of the truth, compassion, empathy, or love for the vulnerable that Pope Francis champions. The arrogant refusals to enter into discussion with regard to the First Nations action items and the progressive discipline policy more recently are representative of the current behavior of trustees who are dedicated to dissension and negativism. I felt compelled to respond in solidarity with our student trustees, to give a voice to the voiceless. I can no longer stand by allowing our School Board and Catholic education to be flagrantly denigrated in the public eye. If this current behavior continues, we won't have a Catholic education system to represent. We have trustees who don't understand their mandate, are not committed to Catholic education, and this reveals a disturbing agenda that was not part of anyone's campaign promise. When political plotting becomes the focus, the true mandate of promoting Catholic education is desperately lost. To that end, I appeal to all trustees to fully embrace and courageously respond to the moral imperative to represent our constituents, our staff, our students, and our parents, and indeed Catholic education, in a positive, honorable, and dignified manner, both in and out of the Board room. Let us be inspired by the Ontario graduate, Catholic graduate expectations, our students who are doing God's work and making an authentic and meaningful contribution to our society in His name, in His word, in His deed. Thank you. Trustee Intomasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really hadn't prepared anything. Um, being away for that initial vote when I came back to this, uh, was a little upsetting for me because I'd felt that if I had been here, the vote would have gone through because we had unanimously decided that at the policy meeting I had attended, and I came back, and of course, the world had turned upside down a little bit on that policy. Um, as, as far as the motion in front of me, um, I've been a trustee, I guess thinking of my ninth year. I look at it in terms of we're all human. Uh, sometimes we say things in the heat of a moment that perhaps we regret. Um, I look at it and I say, well, what is the truth and what, what should a trustee, should be, what should we be saying as a trustee? Well, um, I'm going to throw a few people under the bus if you want to look at it that way. Uh, we have trustee Marai. He put it on social media. What he put on there was true. The comments he made were true. It didn't pass. I saw some of the comments that our, our Chair made, and they were true. It had been unanimous, and it does, uh, if you don't like the phrase dragging feet, it does look like we're dragging our feet. Why was it, you know, this way today and that way tomorrow? Uh, I further saw a letter that went to the Toronto Star from, from trustee Quinn, using a, an employee's name. Notwithstanding it's all public record, these are not the kinds of letters we should be writing. Uh, in all, in all respect to trustee Tritz as saying, well, you know, you shouldn't be saying this or that. Well, I saw some emails that went to people publicly today that you already told them how you were going to vo- vote on a matter. So, um, for myself, I've made mistakes. We all make mistakes. What I am most concerned about is the reputation of this Board and how it affects us all in the province, and that I sit as a rep for the Ontario trustees. And everyone I meet with, people are so devoted to Catholic education. And I was thinking back, you know, and I, I went to Holy Rosy Catholic here, and, and my daughter went through our system, and she loved it to the day she left. She still does. I loved it all the time I was there. And I look at it and I think, why are we doing, as, as the Chair has mentioned, the infighting? You know, like, you, as a child growing up, you're told you don't air your dirty laundry. And these are little things that if we sat down and just had a nice quiet conversation, I think they don't need to be in a public forum. I understand everybody likes transparency, but let's, let's be honest, and let's call out the elephant in the room. There are votes that are, that are already made before we walk in this room because people have been telephoning, texting, emailing, and if anybody wants to pretend that politics is every, any different, I think they're dreaming. So that's all I have to say for this evening. I think we should just let this go, move forward for the good of our system, the good of our children, and for all our students who need support, far more than they need us sitting here talking about this nonsense.
Thank you. Trustee Rabenda, you said you wanted to speak?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have to agree with much of what trustee Ian Tomasi, uh, has said. There have been comments in the press and various forms of media, and there was something that went out today where a trustee publicly stated to, to some parent or ratepayer the way in which that trustee intended to vote. And trustees are supposed to come to their decision after they've sat at the Board table and after they have had the discussion and asked questions and so forth and so on. And that is in writing, which I can find if you want it. Um, but, um, it has been very disconcerting, especially the last few weeks. We have been, uh, bogged down in points of order, ad nauseum. Trustee Marai is quite correct. The, um, the policy went to the Board at the last Board meeting of June seventh. It was defeated at that time, and the trustees in the prevailing side said they would like it to go back to policy to have a more fulsome discussion. So we went back to policy, and the first thing that was on the agenda with that particular topic was there were no changes in the policy, and if it was coming back to Policy Committee, there had to be changes. So, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Vice Chair, the Chair of the Policy Committee and Director of Education, did any trustee, if I may ask, uh, send you any changes to that policy that they wanted to see put on for the Policy Committee? Did anyone receive anything? No, no. So people were unhappy at the Board meeting. They defeated it, said they wanted to send it back to policy. No one submitted any suggestions for any changes. We went back to policy last Tuesday, the fourteenth. Then it was just point of order, point of order, point of order, on and on and on, about the fact that we had this policy back and there were no suggestions. Therefore, it couldn't come back to policy, but you didn't make any suggestions. So then the issue was, excuse me, uh, what was going to happen to the policy then? So, okay, it's going back to the Board meeting tonight. But now you don't want it at the Board meeting because there were no changes made at the Policy Committee. You didn't suggest any changes on the Policy Committee, nor did you submit any changes prior to the Policy Committee. So we're going around, and it doesn't make us look too smart. I could say more, but I think I better stop here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Danko.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Uh, well, to respond to my fellow Board member across this table, there's only two ways a resolution can be brought back, and that's when someone on the prevailing side makes it as a motion, or, uh, may someone moves to reconsider something previously adopted. Those are the only two ways, uh, a motion can be changed. Um, so it, it's not, uh, I mean, I could ask, trustees can't ask for policies to be changed just like that. We, we have rules for a reason, to govern the way we do business. Otherwise, we could be asking for policy changes from either side of any question, uh, forever. So we have rules for a reason. There's a reason why we have a procedure and a process. Um, so that being said, I mean, uh, there was no resolution to go back. Uh, further discussion might have been warranted, but there, there's a time period, uh, that has to be, uh, that's how we do business. There has to, has to be, it has to come up at the proper time. And as for the motion that's up for discussion, um, Madam Chair, I think that, uh, we have lots, you know, we have examples of people who have chaired this Board in the past, uh, acting with, uh, magnanimity, uh, about Board decisions. You know, uh, we've had, uh, Board Chairs in the past that, that spoke, uh, supporting Board decisions that may, they may have personally disagreed with, and they did, they did an exemplary job in being ver- in acting with magnanimity and, uh, and generosity of spirit to communicate what a Board decides, even though they may not have personally agreed with that position.
Thank you. Chloe, did you want to speak?
Yes, I did. Um, so just kind of sitting here and observing, I'm just kind of leaving to question the reasoning behind everything that's been brought up. Um, just at the beginning of the meeting, we saw how for the fourth time a point of order had been striked down, and, um, another trustee already had a statement preparing that, um, motion being striked down. So I just found that very interesting, how there was already something prepared for that. Um, and I just wanted to say that when something is going down into flames, you try to pick it up as fast as you can because it's about to fall apart. And that's, I feel like, where the Board is coming at when it comes to controversial issues. We saw the same thing last year with the sex ed curriculum and how we looked disgusting in the media. And the same thing is happening. I've had people come up to me from school, students, saying, how could you strike down such a policy that is so important and so pivotal in two thousand and sixteen? The fact that we're discussing something around student safety in two thousand and sixteen just because it had to do with LGBTQ issues is, for me, it's appalling because I would think that we're at least progressive enough to understand that every student, no matter what minority group they fall into, should be protected. And the two years that I've been here as a student trustee, Madam Chair's always voted in, in accordance with the students. Last year, when we didn't ag- agree with the delay of the permission, implementation of the sex ed curriculum, she stood with us in solidarity. This year, we did not agree with the policy being striked down. She stood with us in, in solidarity. And, um, for the certain trustees around the table who don't feel like she's doing that, um, I just feel like that we would, I don't feel like there's anybody else who would better represent the students but her at the moment, right now, because she's always stood with us. Um, and it's the same trustees who are shutting down these policies that are so pivotal and im- imminent to Catholic education and to our Board. Um, so I think that, with, with that being said, I just think that it, there's, we need to start discussing issues that are more pressing than this, um, and deciding what are we going to do with student safety, what are we going to do with student health, as opposed to figuring, as opposed to having a whole meeting and an hour dedicated to striking down the Chair because of something that was said. At the end of the day, it is your job to represent the Board and to make sure that the Board is seen in the most positive light. And we all respect and value this School Board. So as Chair, it, it's important to keep the dignity of the School Board, and I believe that sometimes you have to go out and say that this needs to happen and this needs to pass. And for me, this is something that needs to pass because we don't want, we don't need students, like Sabrina coming and saying that she doesn't feel comfortable in the school and she doesn't feel comfortable with our policies because she's not protected. So there's an issue when you have students saying that, hey, I don't feel protected in the schools because it is your mission at the end of the day to protect students. Now, I understand we need to keep things in a Catholic light, but sometimes, safety and sometimes just common sense trumps religion. And I'm sorry, I know I'm Catholic, I was baptized, all of that, but I'm saying it right now. And I don't mind if all of you guys here in the room, because it's important to acknowledge that sometimes other things can trump what we view as Catholicism and what we view as religion. So that's kind of my point of view. I'm sorry that it was all over the place. I'm sorry that, um, it's very passionate, it might not follow Robert's Rules or Point of Order, whatever is going on, but it's just simply how I feel, and I feel like a lot of students would reflect that. So, thank you.
Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to thank Chloe for the student voice, um, and, uh, and everyone else's comments. And, and just very simply, I'm not going to re-echo everything, but, um, I became a trustee to serve the Board and to serve the students. And, uh, and I think this petty infighting that we've been going through is not in the interest of the Catholic education of our children, and, um, that's, uh, that's of primary importance.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, uh, as we went around the horn here, that was a commendable example of straw man fallacies when no one was speaking to the issue other than, uh, tho- those who voted, uh, to not, to not amend that, that policy. Uh, the issue is that the Chair is, is being accused of not upholding the will of the Board in public. And I agree that in your comments to the media, you did not uphold the will of the Board. And I get a sense that when trustee, a trustee doesn't show up and a vote is lost, that you do, you like the rules of governance when you win, but you don't like them when you lose, and you've decided to push through your agenda and, and not, uh, uphold the will of the Board at a trustee meeting.
Point of order, point of order, Madam Chair. You're using that gavel only when someone's, uh, in favor of you.
Jackson would like to speak. So I think it's just respectful.
You for the gavel, Madam Chair.
You had your time. Jackson, it's yours.
So just from listening to everyone speaking, I've kind of like listened and heard a lot of stuff that I agree with, so I'm not going to restate that because I'd like to spend my time kind of going almost to what trustee Quinn said and saying, like, I have to reiterate what some people said. Yes, she's human. And her duty is to re- respond with the, with the Board, but is your du- her duty and not all of our duties, sitting here to also represent the students because students are in the Board as well. And this policy that we've voted down is very important. Just like Chloe said, Sabrina had to come in here today and say to you people that, that she doesn't feel represented by the policy. That's not something that we as students want to hear. I had students coming up to me from a bunch of different Boards asking me why, what happened? Like, this policy, you need to be forward thinkers. And I personally feel like, for the most part, this Board is very forward-thinking in its policies and in its motions. But for some reason, some little comment about hate crimes flips around from what wa- I understand to be a unanimous mode at Policy Meeting to now being, the Board is divided on this policy that students want in there. So, yes, she made a comment that may not have represented what the Board voted on, but it represents what students want. We were dragging our feet. That is a fact. Many other Boards already have a policy in place, from what I've understood, at discussions at this Board table, that protects LGBTQ plus communities and every race, every gender, identity, every religion. Why are we dragging our feet, I think is a very, hitting the nail on the head with what we're doing. We're not moving forward as we should be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And now I'm going to call the vote. Um...
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, you can speak back to it, and then you can, um, read the resolution, and then we can call the vote.
Thank you. Always to state and uphold the will of the Board regardless of personal opinion in all appropriate venues. In this duty given to our Chair, she failed to do. Let me share with you from correspondence I received, some of the comments I received as a result of the intemperance and misleading public remarks made by our Chair. As a Catholic, I do not appreciate you using the religion I hold dear to my heart as a means to condone discrimination. Thank you. As a Catholic, I do not appreciate- As a Catholic, I do not appreciate you using the religion I hold dear to my heart as a means to condone discrimination and refuse protections to minority groups. I understand that you voted against the update to the board's discipline and anti-bullying policy. Shame on you. This is to advise you that as a result of your punitive and non-Christian vote on this policy, I will be changing my taxes from HCDSB and recommend that others do so as well. Let me share with you some of the other comments I have received. I remind you kindly that the rights of all require protection, not just selected groups. Favouring some groups over other is exclusive. Ironically, some proclaim to defend inclusivity through exclusion. My wife and I were appalled to hear that an amendment was put forward that could potentially punish students who express Catholic teachings. I would encourage you to honor the religious rights of our Catholic school students by including very clear definitions. Review the amendment to make sure the language will in fact protect Catholic school students. I applaud the vote to clarify the meaning of these policies and their possible implications. It is important to ensure that there is room for Catholic teaching and advocacy on these matters, and this needs to occur without the worry that it will run afoul of such a policy. But with vague ideas on this very politically contentious issue, clarity is needed. The Chair of our Board was provided with key messaging points from our Communications Department. She used none of these points when speaking publicly. Two pieces of correspondence that I am aware of were received May 30th at the board offices and directed to our Chair and cc'd to all trustees. The Chair, in her response, had to, and I quote, "Reassure you that our board, we are very committed to providing safe, caring, and inclusive school communities for our students and staff." Also quoted and in bold, "I just want to clarify that the board has a current policy in place, which was last amended in January 2015." The response from the Chair to these two pieces of correspondence was to use the key messaging points provided to her from our Communications Department. Unfortunately, these responses to the said two pieces of correspondence are not part of, nor will be, out there in the public domain. I truly can, and I do appreciate the emotions and the passions that surround this topic. Our Madam Chair had choices. Refuse to comment and let the Communications Department respond, or uphold and state the will of the board, regardless of personal opinion, and in all appropriate venues.
Uh, trustee Trites, can you just read the last line, the resolution line of the motion?
Sure.
And move on.
Be it resolved that the Chair of the Board of the Halton Catholic School District School Board, a spokesperson to the public on behalf of the Halton Catholic District School Board, has failed to uphold a board resolution after it is passed by the board.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
Opposed.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda? Trustee Mariah?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Chloe?
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Uh, the motion dies. Moving on to eight point four. Have a mover and a seconder, please. Trustee Danko moves, and seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee Danko will speak to this.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll begin by reading the resolution. Whereas the HCDSB bylaws 1.3 state that Robert's Rules of Order shall govern our meeting procedures, whereas recent proposed amendments to the district policy were not approved by the board per a vote at the board, at a board meeting in May. And whereas Robert's Rules of Order states in section 10 that no main motion is in order that presents substantially the same question as a motion that was finally disposed of earlier in the same session by being rejected, postponed indefinitely, subject to a question, objection to a consideration of a question that was sustained, a main motion that was best disposed of, can however be renewed. That is, the same question can be introduced again as if new at any later session, or a motion to reconsider the vote that was disposed of it can be made for a limited time during the same session. And if such a motion to reconsider is adopted, the previously disposed of motion will thereby become pending. Be it resolved that staff refer the question to our lawyer to get a legal interpretation on whether or not this would be in order, to bring back the same proposed amendments back to board, and to define what the terms substantially the same and same session mean in our context. So, Madam Chair, we, uh, every organization follows the rules of meeting procedure. Otherwise, these meetings would become free-for-alls. They need to be governed by, uh, processes. Um, you must appreciate the fact that processes must be followed. Uh, as we have seen with the recent EMPARS proposals to consolidate schools, the public is very concerned as to whether or not we follow our policies and procedures. There is a period of time that must elapse before the same policy can be brought back to the board table. It's very clear. I'm asking for a legal interpretation, but it should be as clear as the nose on everyone's face at this board table, that it is not proper procedure to bring back precisely the same policy during the same session that's just been dealt with by the board. First of all, it's wasting the board's time, and it doesn't respect all the people around the table. Now, this is a very important policy, as we've seen in the media, uh, and in the discussion, and all of the debate and whatnot. It's a very important policy. The best outcome for the board is to have the maximum number of board members sign off on this policy and agree to it. Now, that may take some time. So, respect the process to allow procedures to be used. If any corporation of this country, or any organization, uh, public organization dispensed with its rules, uh, what would its shareholders do? What would its ratepayers do if parliaments or other organizations dispensed with the meeting procedures? They're there for a reason. They're not there to make the reasons, the meetings bog down. They're there to increase the speed of business, okay? So, if the rules have been properly followed, this policy would have come up in due time at another time. Uh, it could have been brought back the same way. It could have been worked with to uphold. I moved that the policy be referred to a canon lawyer to have some further amendments discussed, but that was, uh, that was not approved at either the last meeting or tonight. So, uh, Madam Chair, I bring this forward to refer to our lawyer to get a legal interpretation of the rules, uh, because they cannot be arbitrarily applied by any Chair who wants to interpret things on the fly.
Would anyone like to speak to this? Trustee Quinn, and then Director Dawson.
Through you, Madam Chair. Short and sweet, I'd encourage every trustee here to support this motion. It will only bring further clarity to our meetings and speed up the processes and prevent these types of arguments. So I think every trustee should support this motion for clarity.
Carabella?
I just wanted to speak to, uh, the motion about, um, the motion to reconsider, because I've, just because I would, just mentioning more discussion is not enough to bring back an item back on the agenda at the board table. And we've made it very clear that we do not want to discuss it out of order. It must be brought back by a motion to reconsider. Brought back by someone from the prevailing side, and a vote has to be taken, and it has to pass. I can't just mention, "I'd like to discuss." It has to be brought as a motion to reconsider. It has to be voted on, and a vote has to be taken, and it has to pass. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this?
Madam Chair, um, trustee Danko was one of the individuals who asked for it to go back to a policy because he thought it would be important to have further discussion. This is just a tactic being used to delay this very important policy from being implemented before the summer months, when there are students in our summer school classes.
Trustee Intomasi?
Two things. One, I'd like a point of clarification on the, uh, the policy itself. Are we, are we not mandated by the Ministry of Education to bring this forward?
Superintendent Penelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had this discussion at policy several times, and in fact, I have brought and I have provided to the board.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Superintendent Penelli. This is not the discussion of the motion in, uh, that is being proposed.
Point of order, trustee. I have, I've asked a question, and I'm entitled to an answer.
Go ahead, Superintendent Penelli. I want Superintendent Penelli to finish.
This isn't germane to the motion.
No, it's not, but nothing that was said around the table for the last half hour was germane to what was being said. I would like Superintendent Penelli to finish, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It goes back to the policy, as I've stated numerous times, around policy and the board. This policy is a mandate that needs to be passed, and it should have been passed a while ago. And we were, in fact, given directions previously as to the amendments that had to be placed in the policy. Yes, you're correct, that many of the trustees defeated it, but there seems to be a lack of understanding around the table that you were making the decision on a mandate that is required, and that is going back to trustee Yantomasi's question. It is mandated by the Ministry of Education.
Madam Chair, if I could then, for the second part, I'd like to point out, it's my understanding that section 1.1 of the board's procedural bylaws, for, excuse me, I understand that section 1.1 of the board's procedural bylaws provide that the provisions of the Education Act take precedent over any HCDSB bylaw. The obligation to pass a bullying policy that includes sexual orientation, gender expression.
She's not speaking to the motion on the table. She's not speaking to the motion. We're discussing a request for legal interpretation. We're not discussing the next issue. This is not germane to the, to the motion that is being placed on the table.
Yes, it is exactly germane to the issue.
We're talking about a notice of motion for, to ask for legal.
Excuse me, I'd like to let trustee Intomasi finish her statement.
Even though it's not germane to the issue.
She says it's germane.
I'll look for, I'll look to hear what, what part of you are discussing.
I know, and I'm ruling. I want, I know, and you're a trustee also, and I'm deciding that I would like trustee Intomasi to have her chance to speak. Everyone else has it.
Point of order, Madam Chair, for clarification. I would like to know, if you are ruling, if you are ruling, it's a point of order. Are you ruling that trustee Intomasi can speak to another point during this? Or are you ruling that you believe that what she's saying is certain?
I don't know what she's saying. I want to hear it.
I can hear what she's saying.
Well, what is she going to say? Well, I can't hear her. Please go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe it is germane to the motion because we're asking to get a legal interpretation whether this motion would be in order, okay? And I'm reading off some information that I have that is stating that the Ministry of Edu, or the Education Act takes precedent over whatever we have here. So we don't need a lawyer to ask that when we have in our own rules, and we know that the Ministry of Education takes precedent, any of their mandates takes precedent over what we want.
Thank you. All right. Can we please keep it quiet in the gallery, please? I'm going to call the vote. Trustee Carabella?
Repeat the, uh, motion, please.
The whole thing?
Be it resolved?
Be it resolved that the staff refer the question to our lawyer to get a legal interpretation on whether or not this would be in order to bring the same proposed amendments back to the board, and to define what the terms substantially the same and same session in our context means. You want your rebuttal time?
Yes, Madam Chair. This isn't a discussion about the policy. This motion is about how we operate, and it's how we bring things back. Madam Chair, you had every opportunity to simply rule this out of order and follow the correct procedures. And this policy would eventually get passed. I, I mean, this motion is to ask for someone, another set of eyes, to interpret our rules, because they don't seem to be getting interpreted correctly at the board table.
I'm calling the vote now. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
Opposed.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
Opposed.
Trustee Mariah?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko? Chloe?
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
That motion fails. Moving on to eight point five, 2016-17 budget estimates. Final. Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as requested at the last board meeting, um, staff have worked, um, on additional revenue increases and expenditure reductions, which are outlined on page two of the report, uh, in an effort to achieve a balanced budget, which is indicated there with a small on the page 16 of your agenda and, um, page two of the report with a small in-year surplus of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, it was done with some revenue increases based on additional secondary staff that we project, as well as additional international students, and expenditure reductions, as indicated on, um, in the fourth paragraph on page 16 of your agenda, page two of the report, including some six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in proposed staffing reductions. Um, myself or senior staff, Roxanna or I or senior staff would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
No one has any questions? Trustee Rowe does.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a question, um, as I had mentioned earlier that, um, uh, the reason we have to bring this revised budget estimates forward is because of negotiations, uh, at the provincial level, um, the costs of which have been passed on to the board, whereas other participants at the provincial level have had their costs covered. And, and of course, we voted as a board to send a letter to the, uh, the minister, and, um, of which we have a new minister. And I, my question is whether, um, that letter has been sent yet.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, it has not been sent, and I believe it's attached as an appendix to the report. It's in draft format, so, uh, we're, we're there, so.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, moving on to eight point six, 2016. I'm sorry. I was going to.
Point of order. We need to vote on the resolution.
I know, I know. All right, so, we didn't get a mover and a seconder, but you're the mover, seconder. All right. So we didn't get a mover and a seconder, but you're the mover. Seconder. Thank you. Now. Okay. Recorded vote. Trustee Carabella? No.
For what we are discussing-
But we already- I already called for questions and comments many times.
Paul, can you read the motion? Please.
Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the 2016-17 budget estimates in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board submitted to the Ministry of Education and the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association a letter outlining the funding challenges faced by the Board as a result of increased sick leave costs and increased insured benefits costs.
Okay.
Okay. In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Susan, I mean trustee Trit, sorry.
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Chloe?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
There you go. Now, moving on to 2016 capital priorities business case submissions. Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we brought forward as a staff report at the last Board meeting, we have been requested by the ministries to submit our capital priorities in accordance with the memo received from them. We have attached- sorry, we've included last year's list and the revised list for this year. And the motion is before you on page eighty-nine of your package. As we indicated at the last meeting, the two- the first two projects are the M-Pars that were approved at the- approved by trustees previously. The third and fourth priorities are our next two- next two most pressing growth area capital priorities. And number five was a subset of number two, actually, Madam Chair. And myself, Fred or Giacomo would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Paul, did you move this? Are you moving this? Trust- a seconder, please. Trustee Yantumasi. Questions, comments? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent. Could you remind me again the- how school boards are tasked by the province with building childcare centers, but we are not in the business of managing, maintaining, or staffing the childcare centers that we are being tasked or being asked to build for the province?
Madam Chair, I'll refer that to Superintendent Corbaccio, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our ministry is- includes- the ministry looks after childcare facilities and all that involves. And there has been quite a concerted effort by the provincial government to put childcare centers within elementary school sites where possible, take them sort of away from the strip mall and to provide affordable, not-for-profit facilities. What we do is because our infrastructure, perhaps it's a compliment to us, our infrastructure is set that we can manage those type of construction projects for the ministry. And the ministry still looks after it, but they're involved more in the actual operating costs than the needs of those children. So we- everything is kept separate. In our current St. Gregory project, the budgets are separate. Everything's allocated differently. We just provide that services are directed by the ministry to do.
Trustee Quinn?
Follow up then to the superintendent. So after the Board borrows the money, gets the money from the province, builds the facilities, we have no control in how or what those facilities will be used for following the completion of the building?
Through you, Madam Chair. Not necessarily. Actually, as part of the process, we work closely with the region of Halton, which oversees the childcare facilities within our area. And actually, there's a request for proposals for operators to operate that facility. We have board policies in place that we include in that request for proposals in terms so that the activities and the services provided are not in conflict with our Board policies. So that's in place. And on a ongoing, go-forward basis, curriculum through Superintendent Percas and her staff is involved in regular conversations and discussions with those operators, not just for the childcare facilities, but also we have a number of childcare services before and after school for our students. It's for grades one to seven. Predominantly, it's the kindergarten to grade four, five. We have statistics on that. And we have noticed an increase in the use of those services to our families. So we are providing a service to our Catholic families with these type of services for looking after those children while typically mom and dad are at work.
Okay. Resolved that the Boards- that the Board authorized staff to submit the Board's 2016 capital priorities business cases submission to the Ministry of Education for funding consideration on July fifteenth, 2016. Trustee Rubenda?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I'd like- can we vote on them separately, please?
Okay. So resolved that the Board approved the proposed ranking of the capital priorities business cases such as follows. One Georgetown, two Oakville South, three Boyne Secondary, four Boyne Secondary Three, Oakville South Central. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trit?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Danko? Chloe?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Resolved that the Board approved the potential childcare projects for 2016 as follows. North Georgetown, St. Dominic. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trit?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi? Trustee- you're going faster than me. Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Chloe?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Resolved that the Board authorized staff to submit the Board's 2016 capital priorities business cases submission to the Ministry of Education for funding consideration on July fifteenth, 2016. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trit?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
So moved. Okay. Moving on to 8.7, 2016 to 21, strategic planning. Director Dawson?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Could I have someone move this? Get it on the floor, please? May I speak, Madam Chair? Okay. This report, coming again as an action report, defines the four broad areas of priority and identifies the outcomes that will serve as our foundation for and our framework for the strategic plan for 2016 to 2021. In your package, trustees, there's an outline of all the steps and the phases that we went through and the four areas of priority after many consultations and our meetings were as follows. Foundational elements, achieving, believing, and belonging. And the next steps of our work, we need to- staff will be developing specific action plans now that we've got the language from you and you've approved these priorities. Staff will be making plans for each outcome to include measurable indicators with timelines and levels of participation and the responsibility for those actions as well as the budgetary implications over the five-year period. And this detail will be presented to trustees at the regular Board meeting on September sixth. And as well, on September the sixth, we plan to share the communication plan with all our stakeholders, with you. And then also present to you in September the monitoring reports and the timing for that. So, Madam Chair, I leave you with responsibility to take the vote.
Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the four strategic priorities and the fourteen desired outcomes as outlined in Appendix A. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I didn't- nobody put their hand up?
Madam Chair, so just to clarify, my- to understand that the strategic plan is page one hundred to one hundred and one of the report, is there not a full strategic plan coming at a later meeting? Or is page one hundred the strategic plan?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is the language that trustees needed to approve before we can actually identify measures and indicators. So you had to approve the language that we would work on. And then we would be positioned to bring focus on the September sixth meeting with all those indicators for you and all of the work that would be done by staff. So it's come- use this as the language. The indicators, the measurable indicators will come in September.
So, Madam Chair, will there be a comprehensive strategic plan document that we will be asked to approve at a future meeting? Because this, I mean, this doesn't really look like a strategic plan.
Yes, Madam Chair. Through you.
Okay. So now we're gonna- trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trit?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor. And I just wanted to say thank you to the staff because there was a lot of work that went into this and to hone it down to what they did is wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
So moved. Thank you. Moving on to 8.8, audit committee meetings. Trustee Rowe?
I'd like to move, please?
Mover, please. Trustee Marai, seconder. Trustee Trit? There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board passed a resolution to do with the Audit Committee to ensure that open-closed Audit Committee meetings were defined to some degree in the absence of a definitive answer from the Ministry. Since that time, we have received that definitive answer. And a report was commissioned on provincial level by Deloitte. And the meeting, the details of what constitutes an open versus a closed session of the Audit Committee meetings are outlined there. And they specifically talk about open meetings, closed meetings, and in-camera meetings. And I will draw your attention to a different definition of closed and in-camera meetings at the provincial level than what our Board bylaws state. So those are all there for us. So what the resolution that we've put forward is to- we rescind what we had previously and we adopt the Deloitte report as a guideline for Audit Committee meetings.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to that? Trustee Quinn?
Perhaps I- through you, Madam Chair, perhaps I didn't see it. But is the motion that we are- or the resolution we are rescinding written down in this preamble? Can you point it out to me, please?
Madam Chair, I can answer that if you like. It's included in the appendix, which was the Audit Committee reports on page one twenty-four. One twenty- okay, one twenty-four. One twenty-four over to one twenty-five in my-
Is there any other comment or question? Trustee Danko?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think that- I think this has been misinterpreted. And I think that the only reason to have closed Audit Committee meetings are to conceal any methods or techniques or ways used to potentially fraud, defraud Boards, fraudulent behavior within Boards. I think that we're putting too much into the secret meetings. And that is why I supported a move to have public Audit Committee meetings to increase transparency. And I think that the Deloitte report, the spirit of the report upholds that. I think that we are putting too much in camera. And I don't support rescinding the motion.
Anything else? Seeing nothing. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board- no. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the recommendation of the Audit Committee and rescind Resolution Number 125/15. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the recommendation of the Audit Committee to adopt the recommendations made in the Deloitte report on open versus closed sessions of Audit Committee meetings by holding open, closed, and in-camera meetings as prescribed by the Deloitte report. Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Jackson?
Opposed.
Trustee Trit?
Opposed.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Opposed.
Chloe?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
And Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
It's a tie, so it dies. So it prevails. Well, it- or I can vote. I'll vote. I want to approve it in favor of. So it passes. Moving on to 8.9, 2016-17, internal audit plan. Trustee Rowe?
I would like to move, Madam Chair, that the- Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Audit Committee to approve the internal audit plan for 2016 and 17 and resolved that the internal audit plan for 2016 and 17 include the following audits: school-generated funds compliance review and BAS data integrity assessment.
Dean Marai and Trustee Quinn, you have your hand up? Okay. Trustee Rowe?
Just a point that these items are brought to the Board's attention based on the recommendation of the Deloitte report that a vote of the Board as a whole is required, whereas that was not clear previously.
Anyone else would like to comment or question? No. Trustee Rowe just read it, so I'm not gonna reread it. So I'm gonna call the vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trit?
In favor.
Trustee Rubenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Yantumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Passed. Moving on to 8.10, Policy 2-39, progressive discipline and safety in schools, code of conduct, suspensions and expulsions. Trustee Marai, mover and a seconder to get that on the floor?
I'll move it.
Seconder. Trustee Yantumasi?
Madam Chair, I'm pleased to present Policy 2-39, progressive discipline and safety in schools, code of conduct, suspensions and expulsions. And be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accepted the recommendations of the Policy Committee and approved Policy 2-39, progressive discipline and safety in schools, code of conduct, suspensions and expulsions as amended. As you all are aware, this is a policy that's actually been at the policy meeting three times since April. It's appeared on the agenda three times since April. It's appeared on the Board agenda twice. Frankly, I'm not sure if there's much more to say about it. We've all had opportunities to debate it. The only comment I will make is that I think that our delegation was the most eloquent on this topic, which when they said currently the Halton Catholic District School Board has failed these students. And that's why I'll be supporting this policy to be passed this evening.
Trustee Yantumasi and Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did get several emails today and I just wanted to share with a few of you, whoever's here or listening, that people, I think, have a misunderstanding of what the policy is about. And I just want- Um, and I just wanted to be clear, the proposed policy is in no way prevents our Catholic students from expressing their faith. All our policies and curriculum are rooted in our Catholic faith. They're supported by our Ontario bishops, the Institute for Catholic Education, and our local diocese. Our board works with all of these parties all the time, okay? Our own, as, as it was said, our own student trustees relate to us for the dialogue does already happen in the classroom where students are respectful in their debate of faith and lifestyle. To me, it's, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. And I believe as long as there is dialogue that's respectful and open and genuine, then that's the way it should be presented. If you wanna bring your Catholic viewpoint as a, as a student, it will be accepted. It's when you use it as a hammer, or when you use it disrespectfully, or when you sit in judgment, that the students have a problem with it. And I believe these students should be protected. We are all God's children. We're all made in the likeness of God. And if we are gonna treat each other, as Christ said, whatever you do to your brothers, you do to us, as we were told in our Mass, again, by Father prior to this meeting, then I think we have to take that to heart. And so I will simply be voting in favor of moving this policy forward. It's a mandate of the ministry. And by God, it's only human to treat everyone the way you should.
Trustee Danko.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have to, uh, let you know that I will be abstaining from the vote on this policy because I believe the policy's been, been, been brought back in an improper fashion. Um, all that had to happen was a period of time needed to elapse to bring it back at the end of the session. Uh, this is exactly the same policy. Uh, it's in, uh, contradiction to the rules, um, which state that a period of time has to pass, or, uh, uh, certain types of motions to bring back something previously considered, uh, to get something back on the table. This is the same policy that the board's already dealt with. It defeated the board, uh, it was defeated at that board meeting. So regardless of the side, uh, of which, of what you believe about this policy is beside the point, uh, what matters is that we are not bringing back this policy in the proper fashion. Um, I think that it could've been dealt with in a much easier way. Um, uh, and that being said, I'll, I'm just letting you know that I will, I will not be voting on the policy. I can't vote on something that I believe is, is, uh, not in order.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to clarify some mi- misinformation that we heard around the board table and, uh, in our, our, uh, our presentations from the family tonight. Uh, I, I quote, it says, "Your decision to exclude gender and secu- secu- secular, excuse me, sexual orientation for the policy," uh, we, we never decided to remove those words from the policy. The current policy, right now as it stands, reads that we will promote a positive school climate that is inclusive, accepting of all pupils, including pupils of any age, ancestry, color, citizenship, creed, disability, ethnic origin, family status, gender expression, gender identity, marital status, place of origin, race, sex, or sexual orientation. So we didn't remove anything, we didn't strip down any, anyone's protections. We asked a question, everyone freaked out.
Chloe.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the last meeting there, we've discussion about removing that part because, um, of the fact that if students...
I get that as well.
Okay, so from the way that I interpreted, so I'm, sorry, my opinion can't be wrong, um, we, what was said was that we wanted to, that trustee Quinn wanted to remove that part because you were afraid that if students wanted to seek on behalf of, um, Catholicism or the Catholic perspective, that they might be barred for that. Um, so the fact that you were saying that nothing was removed, there was a motion to remove that part, and then that's why it got pushed back to policy. So, um, just, I don't, correct me, I don't, I'm not really taking it, but thanks anyway.
Trustee Rabenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as we know, many times, this is a mandated policy from the Ministry of Education, the organization from whom we take funding. Uh, Superintendent Pennelli has very eloquently outlined the details of this policy that we must pass if we wish to continue, uh, being a publicly funded school board, one may say. Uh, we did try to have, uh, school boards, uh, our school board particularly, um, funded some schools, and our secondary schools, we started off in the nineteen eighties, and at that time, we asked for staff to voluntarily make, uh, salary deductions on an automatic, uh, basis from their salaries to fund our first high school. We also had, uh, envelopes put in the church plates, but it simply wasn't enough. So we took funding from the government. The government's been very good to us in many ways, and, uh, if we wish to continue our good relationship and make sure that our children are properly taken care of, then I think we need to pass this policy. It's long overdue.
Trustee Trites.
I'd just like to point out that the government gets its money from taxpayers, Catholic, school, ratepayers, we pay taxes. We're using our publicly funded money for our system.
Trustee Carabella.
I just want to say publicly that I'm not going to, uh, debate because it would be legitimizing this, uh, well, I feel we're out of order, and, um, I won't be discussing it.
Trustee Intomasi.
One, one quick comment, uh, to trustee Trites' comment. Yes, we do have a lot of Catholic children. We also have a lot of non-Catholic children, especially in our secondary. And they come to us because they feel that we have a viable system, and we have to protect them as well as our own children. It's about protecting everyone, not just our own children.
Trustee Trites.
The point was Catholic ratepayers pay taxes. We do. It's our money spent on our system. We welcome everybody in our such, this system, especially at the secondary level. It's not the issue.
Okay, I'm calling the vote. Oh, sure, sure.
If, if I may finish off, uh, have a, a minute, um, no, no, that's okay. Um, in, in, in the wake of what happened in the United States, um, I, I wanted to quote, uh, Bishop Robert Lynch, uh, he's the bishop of Saint Petersburg. He said, "Sadly, it is in religion, including our own, which targets mostly verbally and al- and also often breeds contempt for gays, lesbians, and transgender people. Attacks today on LGBT men and women often plant a seed of contempt and hatred which can ultimately lead to violence." And, and I think that, uh, trustee Intomasi said it best, w- we need to treat others as we would want, if, as we would want to be treated. It's as simple as that. And, and I want to particularly thank the courage of the family who came out this, uh, this evening. Uh, we should pass this policy because it simply is the right thing to do. Madam Chair, respectfully ask you to call the vote.
And I shall. Trustee Carabella.
I'm abstaining, I can't vote for this, it's not in order.
Okay. Jackson.
In favor.
Trustee Trites.
It's not in order, I abstain.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
You're abstaining, Chloe. Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
Opposed.
Three abstain, one oppose. Four in favor, passes. So Mrs. Furlong and Sabrina, you now have your answer to your delegation. And thank you again. Moving on to eight point eleven, Amendments to Board Bylaws. Trustee Marai.
Madam Chair, this is also from our last Policy Committee meeting. Uh, be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve, uh, the board's bylaws as amended. Uh, the only comment I'll make is that we, uh, received, we had a, a pretty fulsome discussion, uh, at, at Policy, uh, and I think the changes have been, have been made to reflect that.
Um, can I have a seconder? Trustee Intomasi. Does anyone like to speak to this? Paul?
If I may, and, and this, we had quite a few different, uh, items come up at the Policy Committee on that, on this bylaw. Um, one thing that has been discussed in the past, uh, has been changes to our own, I just wanna find the exact section, uh, meeting to bring them in line with what our schools do, uh, and that is nine point five, Order of Business. And I just thought, since we've asked our schools to sing the National Anthem and have the oath of citizenship, it would be nice, uh, if we could, uh, do this at this venue as well. So if, if, uh, it's the will of the group, that would be the one amendment I would make at this, uh, time.
Any questions or comments? I think we, trustee Intomasi seconded it. I thought you put your hand... Oh, okay. You seconded the resolution, okay. Anyone like to speak to this before we call the vote? On the amendment, okay, on the amendment. The smile was not a second, so I need a seconder for an ame- trustee Trites. No comments? All in favor of the amendment? Five, that's five. Six. Uh, okay, so now back to, do you wanna read it as amended? Okay, so we're gonna just call the vote on the, that motion, the amended motion. Trustee Carabella. Jackson.
In favor.
Trustee Trites.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
Favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Danko. Chloe. Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
Opposed.
Okay. Moving on to eight point twelve, Policy Two Dash Twelve, Management of Aggressive Student Behavior Within Our Schools Sec-... We did. I thought, I said motion as amended, and he read it.
That, that was the ame- that was a specific amendment to the...
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. So now, the main motion as amended.
We didn't, that vote was not on the amendment. Everyone thought they were voting on the...
Main motion as amended.
The make the whole policy, no, yes. But...
Yeah, that's...
But there's no recording of the vote of who supported the amendment. Let's just redo it.
Okay, so we're gonna redo the amendment?
We gotta re- reopen the entire...
Okay. So let's vote on the amendment. Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
In favor.
Jackson. She's, uh, Trites, trustee Trites.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Chloe. Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
Opposed.
All right, now we're gonna vote on the motion as amended. Do you have a mover? Seconder? Yes? Okay, I just wanna make sure. Okay, so now we're going to vote on that, trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Trites. Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Chloe. Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
Opposed.
So moved. Policy Three Dash Seventeen, Attendance Support Program, First Reading, trustee Marai. Eight twelve. A lot of motions here. Okay, Paul. Need a mover and a seconder?
Would you like me to read it out first? Madam Chair.
Trustee Quinn. Seconded. Trustee Marai. All right.
And be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve Policy Three Dash Seventeen, Attendance Support Program as amended at first reading.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Jackson.
In favor.
Trustee Trites.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai. Trustee Intomasi. Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Chloe. Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
So moved. Eight point thirteen, Policy Three Dash Seventeen, Attendance Support Program, First Reading, su- uh, trustee Marai.
That, yeah, I did, I did actually, I did flip them.
Didn't? Yeah, we just did it.
Okay, I'll, I'll read it out, this is from...
We did it already, Paul, so do, uh, eight point thirteen.
In, in my, in my, uh, item eight point thirteen is the Attendance Support Program in, on, online. So result, so you, at the Attendance Support Program, okay, not... So... I'd like to provide the following recommendation, uh, presented to the board for consideration. Be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of Policy Committee and approve Policy Three Dash Seventeen, Attendance Support Program as amended at first reading.
We have a mover and a seconder? Trustee Rabenda. Trustee Danko. Any discussion? Yes, trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm trying to recall at the policy meeting, was it brought up that additional language would be added and brought to the first reading? And if so, has something been added that I can't see highlighted in my, in my print package? Uh, and Superintendent, uh, Soprano can I speak if, I know for the next one it has, but if you wanna speak to this one.
Through you, Madam Chair, my recollection is that, uh, it would pass at first reading, and then additional language would be brought at second and third reading, uh, as requested by, by, uh, the trustees. Uh, we have Superintendent, uh, Mr. O'Hara here as well, who might be able to speak to that specific, uh, request as well.
Thank you, we got through the chair. And that was my understanding, was that, uh, we were going to bring, uh, additional changes to second reading.
Trustee Dank.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to see this policy represent, or be more, um, aligned or, uh, be more comparable to, uh, policies that other municipalities have, like the city of Toronto, other large organizations like universities and colleges and, and municipalities, regional governments, that actually lay out the steps of attendance management in, within their policies. And the reason for that is so that it can't be made up and changed arbitrarily along the way, so that it's, it's a fixed policy, that it has to come to the Board of Directors or the Board of Trustees of an organization so that they know what's going on and how the policy's being operated. If we don't do that, if we don't incorporate language like that into the policy, then that leaves the door open for it to be, be changed by, uh, full-time staff whenever they wish.
Any other comments or questions? And we're gonna call the vote, please? Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Jackson.
In favor.
Trustee Trites.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi. Trustee Danko. Chloe. Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Thank you. Policy One Dash Fourteen, Smoking Ban, trustee Marai.
On behalf of the Policy Committee again, resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of Policy Committee and approve Policy I Dash Fourteen, Smoking Ban as amended. Uh, it incorporates the additional language the Policy Committee asked to be, uh, to be included in, in links, uh, specifically. Um... So I'll leave it there.
A mover and a seconder? Trustee Intomasi. Trustee Rowe. Any questions or comments? Trustee Danko.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm glad to see some references to the risks of using marijuana because there's so much confusion, uh, in society today about, um, between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, and it's important to, to be clear that recreational marijuana use is harmful.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, gonna call that vote, please? Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Jackson.
In favor.
Trustee Trites.
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda.
In favor.
Trustee Marai.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi. Trustee Danko. Trust, Chloe? Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
Favor.
And trustee Quinn?
Favor.
Thank you. Policy V dash oh four, School Fundraising Activities, trustee Marai.
Be a result, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept, accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve Policy four dash zero four, School Fundraising, oh dash zero four, School Fundraising Activities as amended.
Seconder, please? Trustee Quinn? Seconder, trustee Rowe? Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trice?
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai? Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
Favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Policy two dash forty-seven, Fees for Learning Materials, Programs, Curricular and Co-Curricular Activities, trustee Marai.
Madam chair, I'll move that be a result, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve Policy two dash forty-seven, Fees for Learning Materials, Programs, Curricular and Co-Curricular Activities as amended. And I'll, I'll comment that, that the changes that trustees asked for in the Policy Committee have also been incorporated on the student activity fees being voluntary explicitly stated.
It's moved by trustee Rabenda, seconded. Trustee Carabella? Any questions or comments? Seeing none? We'll call the vote, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trice?
In favor.
Trustee Rabenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
Favor.
Trustee Intomasi? Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
Favor.
Trustee Quinn?
Favor.
Thank you. Social Studies, Supplementary Resource Purchase, Supporting First Nations, Métis and Inuit Education, Superintendent Pocassin.
Do you need a motion to listen to?
Motion and a seconder to get on the floor, trustee Quinn and trustee Intomasi, thank you, Superintendent Pocassin.
Thank you, through you, madam chair. The purpose of this report is to recommend the purchase of a supplementary resource for grade one to three social studies that focuses on First Nations, Métis and Inuit histories, culture and perspective. The resource selected is Turtle Island Voices, which is distributed by Pearson Canada. The Turtle Island Voices series offers Indigenous students an opportunity to see themselves reflected in their learning materials. It offers all our students the opportunity to recognize the role and contributions of Indigenous peoples in the life, culture and heritage of Canada. Furthermore, this resource encourages students to become empathetic and more aware of family, community, and global issues, which aligns with our focus on faith themes of stewardship of creation, human dignity, community and the common good, as well as solidarity. This resource will also be used to support inquiry-based learning, which has been explicitly embedded in the expectations of the social studies curriculum. The recommendation is to purchase Turtle Island Voices for grade one to three as the approved supplementary resource.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, madam chair, is it foreseen that other grades will be, be receiving materials beyond grade three? And do we have an idea of what the full budget will be for this, for materials that, that support First Nations, Métis and Inuit education?
Through you, madam chair, this is the final Turtle Island purchase. This will give the Turtle Island a resource for grades one through to grade eight. We began purchasing in 2011 and continued on through to this year. The actual, and I think your supplementary question was what the actual First Nations, Métis and Inuit budget, is that correct? Oh, it's the full budget for it? Or this is sixty-six thousand? This purchase is sixty-six thousand? It's grades one, two and three, it's approximately for fifty-five schools, approximately twenty-two thousand per grade.
Any other questions or comments? All right, resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approves the purchase of Turtle Island Voices for grade one through three. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Jackson?
In favor.
Trustee Trice?
In favor.
Trustee Carab, I'm sorry, Rabenda?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
Favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Chloe? Trustee Rowe?
Favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. There are no staff reports. Moving on to information items, ten point one, Student Trustee Update.
Good evening and thank you, so we actually didn't really prepare a report for tonight. So hopefully no, no point of order to this one. But what I wanted to kind of say and do is to thank each and every one of you for the last two years. I have grown so much and I'm going to miss this building, it's like my second home almost, 'cause I'm like here all the time. But I've just learnt so much, and like the person that I've come in as is completely different from the person that I'm leaving at as, I'm not afraid to like talk back to my mom now, 'cause I'm like, Mom, like... Because I've just gained so much confidence in being here. And I've learnt so much from Robert's Rules, to just how to properly formulate a sentence and a paragraph, and it, and how to have healthy debate and conversation with people. And it's been nice to tackle controversial topics and to kind of be just in this position. So I thank you guys so much. I'm gonna really miss it, I'm hoping I can steal this little like placard and put it in my room, and just to know that there's going to be a picture of like big HESV fam next year. I'm gonna proudly tell everyone that I was part of the best board in the, in the country, actually. And it's just been, it's been great, so I'm definitely gonna come and visit. And if you guys ever visit Montreal, don't forget to come and see me, so just thank you so much.
Kind of just echoing what Chloe said, I'd like to say thank you to all of you guys as well. I've only been here for a year, but like it feels like I've been here forever, and I, now it's like, oh, I'm done. And I don't want to be done. I was walking in today, I was like, this is the last time I'm gonna come in here and sit at the table and get to speak on par with you guys, and like learn how to be diplomatic, how to make motions, how to vote, like how, how to ask questions, and not be afraid to do that. And I think that's one of the things I learned the most this year, is don't be afraid to ask questions. And I'm, I'm very glad I took the, I got the opportu, or not even got the opportunity, I was given the opportunity to sit here on this board and work with all of you amazing people. If you ever come to Mac, I'll be there. Probably in my room studying. But anyways, I'd like to say thank you as well.
You better brief those new ones. Yes?
I just want to remind Chloe that your mother's the equivalent of the chair of the board.
I just wanted to thank Chloe and Jackson, this is, it does eat up a lot of your time. And you do a great job in representing us, you do a great job of articulating what you, what you think, what you feel and what you see. And I, I think for a trustee to hear what you have to say is very important, because we're stuck in this room and we don't always get to speak to secondary students, we don't get to hear what students think. And I know that you put in a lot of time provincially as well, so I want to thank you for that, and I, I wish you all the very best moving forward, and I didn't cry this year.
Thank you to both of you, it's been great, it really has. And Manuela, but she's coming back. We still got her. School educational field trips are attached for your information. If there's any questions, Superintendent Nara will be happy to answer them. No? Ten point three, Budget Report for September one to May thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, madam chair, this is the third report we brought forward this year on the budget. We do them quarterly now. As the report indicates, there, we're on track with the revised, I guess Roxanne, I could call it the revised revised, including the changes that have been made to reflect the negotiated settlements with the, the unions. So myself or Roxanne would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Madam chair, sorry, I should mention too, as indicated in the report, we do have, Fred, we do have the final enrollments for the fifteen, sixteen year, because October, the count dates, October and March are now final. So we're, we're up actually forty-five point two nine students, I believe, I'm reading that correct, right, Fred and Roxanne? Forty-five point two nine over what we had forecasted in the revised estimate. So, at roughly ten thousand dollars a student funding that we get, it's about half a million dollars to the good in our budget, so, which should help us with the year end, so that was it, madam chair.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Capital Projects Report as of May thirty-one, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you again, madam chair, this is the capital report that we bring forward at the same time as the, the operating budget report. It shows the projects that are currently underway, which are essentially two, being St. Gregory the Great and Holy Rosary Milton. And we have the usual debenture reports attached and, and the summaries as well. And myself or Roxanne would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Any questions about the capital projects? No? Response to the delegation, Superintendent Cipriano, the uniform bender, Parents' Perspective.
Thank you, through you, madam chair, present this information report as requested by the board in response to the delegation presented at the June seventh, two thousand sixteen board meeting. This information report outlines the history of the elementary uniforms in, in our system, the changes made to our uniform policy two forty-one over the years, in response to stakeholder feedback, as well as outlining the number of elementary schools in our system that are currently in uniform, that being twenty-nine of our forty-five elementary schools. The report describes our current uniform supplier, McCarthy's Uniforms, and some of the initiatives they've undertaken over the years to be more responsive to our parents' needs. Finally, the report also outlines the bidding process for the Request for Proposal process, both the most recent process that occurred in two thousand eleven that resulted in McCarthy's receiving the current contract, and going forward outlining the upcoming bid that we will be undertaking this coming summer. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the report.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, madam chair, I'm, I'm sorry to report that I'm disappointed in, in the content of this report, as I, I don't see it as more than a history. The, the delegation asked a number of specific questions of, of the board here, and, and none of those questions I, I think are answered, other than stating what the status quo is with our board. So, there were, I think, as I went through my notes, at least fourteen specific questions that were asked, and this report did nothing to address those questions. So, I'm, I'm disappointed in the report, and I don't think it, it serves the purpose of, of what the trustees asked the board to do.
No?
Sure, through you, madam chair, many of the questions, many of the concerns raised were specifically about McCarthy's uniform, the supplier. This, this delega, the delegation, the full delegation report was, was shared with McCarthy's representatives. The report will also be shared with the RFP committee this coming summer, so it will inform the committee on the challenges that this, this delegation outlined. It's difficult to, to respond on behalf of McCarthy's, some of the, some of the questions that were raised about their service. What we did, what I did was present them to our representatives of McCarthy's, and they, in some cases, in the report outlined some of the places that they've responded prior to the delegation. For example, one of the questions, one of the concerns being that they have one, only one location in Oakville. They had responded prior to the delegation that they were, they were having, they were building a location in Milton to, to service all of our North Halton and Milton schools, that being one example. But as I said, going forward, many of their concerns were about McCarthy specifically, and so those were shared with McCarthy's, and those will also be shared with our RFP committee.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you.
Oh, you know what, we're gonna need to vote, we have to vote to go forward. Yes?
You need six votes to go past ten o'clock.
Okay. All in favor of going past ten? Five? That was a plan. It's, oh, I want to finish it. Okay, let's do it again. All in favor? Six? The response to delegation, is there any other questions or comments? Trustee Carabella?
I just wanted to know, like, the, the difference that we would find between a staff report and a information report? You know that that's how we can respond to the delegation? I'm just wondering what substantially is different between those two vehicles? Usually, in an information report, it's just, you, you won't see it again, it's just for trustees' information, whereas a staff report comes to say heads up, there's gonna be action coming the next meeting, so that would come as an action report.
St. Gregory the Great Catholic Elementary School, Monthly Construction Report, Superintendent Corbaccio.
Thank you, madam chair, you had the report before you, unfortunately, it appears that the incorrect schedule is there, it shows the Holy Rosary is scheduled twice. The schedule for St. Gregory would show that we're just slightly behind schedule. But any event, we're still optimistic that we'll have the students in the school for September. And I'll, if you like, I could also do Holy Rosary, which is moving along just smoothly as well, and we're very confident that that will be done well before December. Please take any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, madam chair, could we ask that superintendent send us the correct updated construction schedule as soon as possible?
Absolutely, we'll do it tomorrow morning.
Through the St. Gregory's Twitter account, it's already been set up, I've noticed that there's a WordPress website that tracks the construction as well, and has some great photos and, on it. Is it set up by the architects, or what group? And I just would encourage trustees also to go to it, because it actually shows a lot of detail on what's going on on that, on the site.
That's correct, that is, that account is done by the actual project management through the architect. It's actually intended for the contractors on the site to provide some incentive and rah rah to get them moving. But we will be doing a, a scaled-down version for Holy Rosary through our communications department and our own staff, that will be sort of a model to move forward. We didn't have enough time to, to do it for St. Gregory, because of the, we want to get the school built. But we're gonna try it with Holy Rosary Milton, and then on a go-forward basis, students and parents will be able to follow the progress through it.
Thank you very much, Jacomo. Attached, under Miscellaneous Information are the minutes of the Audit Committee of November seventeenth, the minutes of the CPIC meeting of May second, minutes of the Policy Committee meeting of May tenth, and the minutes of the CAC meeting of May thirtieth, for your information. Attached is correspondence, is a letter from the OMB regarding education development charges, and a letter regarding school uniforms from Alessia and LeMay, attached for your information. We have no open questions, but we do have to go back in camera.
To beg your pardon, madam chair, I just wanted to make note, we received this week a letter from the Public School Boards Association of Alberta. And in the letter, they thanked me for Chloe, who did a presentation to this group of trustees. The young lady says was a keynote speaker at our Spring General Assembly, and she spoke eloquently about her work as a student trustee with the Halton Catholic School Board and president of the Ontario Student Trustees Association. So Chloe, I wanted you to know and the board to know that your work is spreading and that you are very well recognized, and thank you for representing us well.
Thank you. So, we're going back in camera, so we'll have to ask a few of you to leave.